I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council, this regular meeting of North Adams City Council to order for August 27, 2024. This meeting can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to the website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at youtube, Click on the live and then the 2024 dot point or dot oh eight dot 27 city council meeting. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackner.
Bona.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Fitch.
Here.
Mora.
Oleskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Seven members present, we have a quorum. Please stand for a moment of silent remembrance. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, they are. Okay, yep. Great. Okay, approval of minutes. Can we get a motion for the July 9, 2024 council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes for the July 22, 2024 special city council meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, July 23, 2024, regular city council meeting.
I move to approve.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing of visitors, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Would anybody like to speak to hearing of visitors tonight? Okay, hearing none. Council Paper Number 12,00191-1. In ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 15, entitled Litter, Sections 2, 3, 8.1, 8.2, 16, and 25, passed to a second reading and published as required by law at the meeting of July 23, 2024.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Who did the first?
Pete.
Counselor Oleskowitz, yep. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Bona.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Fitch.
Yes.
Oleskowitz.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Council Paper Number 12,00191-2. In ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams by adding a new chapter, 15A, entitled Feeding of Wildlife, passed to a second reading and published as required by law at the meeting of July 23, 2024.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Oleskowitz and Wilkinson. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Bona.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Fitch.
Yes.
Oleskowitz.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Seven names.
Motion approved. Council Paper Number 12,364. Communication from Counselor Fitch requesting time for a presentation about crosswalk safety and discussion of opportunities for improvement referred to the administration with a return date of August 27, 2024. File the communication without objection. Counselor Fitch, would you like to update us on this, please?
I'm sure, I was hoping for an update from the administration, however.
Okay.
Sure, so the presentation that was given to us is a little bit more about than just crosswalk safety. A lot of it, too, is about painting the sidewalk or painting the crosswalks and changing some of the places where crosswalks are. So that is still on my desk under advisement. We really don't feel right now that this is a priority for us. I'm happy to revisit it at a later date, but not right now. So I don't know if the council wants to continue this paper or file it, and then as it grows, as it creeps to the top of the pile, I'm happy to have further discussions with Counselor Fitch. But right now, it's not an active topic on the desk.
Okay, Counselor Fitch.
Sure, is there, is there a certain timeline that we should just extend this to, to resurface the conversation, or, sorry, through the chair to the mayor?
I think this, at this time, it falls into the administration, and it's not a hot topic right now. I'd be happy to talk to you after the first of the year, but right now, we're working on a lot of other, more pressing things. Not that this isn't pressing, I understand it's important to some, but right now, it's, it's still there, I didn't throw it away, honestly. But it's not a priority for us at this time.
Move to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, my recommendation, obviously, right now, we wouldn't probably want to be painting or doing anything this time of year, as we'd be getting into winter soon anyway, but I think it would be nice to have an answer on this by the end of winter, so that if this is something that can happen, you know, because again, the state laws have, or the federal laws have changed on what is allowed now, but it would be nice if this was to be allowed to have it, so that they could be done in the spring, so that people can enjoy them throughout the warmer weathers, because again, they do tend to get worn more during the winter with the salt and the sand and everything, so.
That's why I said January. So we're on the same page.
Counselor Shade and then Counselor Fitch.
Yes, I agree with everything Counselor Bona just said. Moving this out until after winter makes the most sense. We wouldn't want to invest in paint and then have it all scraped up during the winter season, so just completely agree with that, thank you.
Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, I would encourage us to kick this to the second meeting of January, rather than tabling.
All right, so we have a motion currently on the floor to table this.
And a second.
And a second.
We can always bring it back at a later date.
No, it's not filing, it's not filing it, it's tabling it.
Well.
It's sort of the same, well, actually, we're not voting on it, so it's not getting voted down.
I'll withdraw my motion if you have a better idea. I just hate seeing all these things get drawn out and drawn out and drawn out.
Counselor Shade.
I would recommend that this either be tabled or filed completely, and a new communication come up after, January, after the meeting with the mayor and the administration, and a new presentation can be provided. That would be my suggestion.
I, yeah.
Counselor Fitch?
I hear you, and that's fine, I could just come and give the same presentation again, but I was just hoping to put the placeholder, you know, on that, on that date, on the second meeting of January instead. But I'm totally open to that proposal.
Okay. Is there, is there a second on the table?
Yes.
So there's a second for that January date?
No, there's a second on tabling it.
There was a second on tabling.
But then you did rescind your motion.
You rescinded it, so.
I said I was willing to, I didn't say I didn't will.
Oh, you haven't rescinded it yet, okay. Would you care to rescind your motion at this time, or would you like to?
I'd love to know where I was going after I rescind it. Sure, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay. And we need a new motion. Counselor Fitch?
I move to send this to the second meeting in January.
Second meeting of January. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
We have two noes over here.
Two noes, five ayes.
Where was the other no?
Okay, moving on. Council Paper Number 12,408. Communication Number 58 from Mayor Maxey recommending the appointment of Tori Wilhelm to serve as a member of the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire August 27, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz and Counselor Shade, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,419. Communication Number 59 from Mayor Maxey recommending the appointment of Lee, can somebody help me?
Uta.
Okta.
Akta?
Uta.
Uta. Thank you. To serve as a member of the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire August 27, 2027.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Shade and Oleskowitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,420. Communication Number 60 from Mayor Maxey recommending the appointment of Paul Moriarty to serve as a member of the Traffic Commission for a term to expire January 10, 2025, filling the unexpired term of Paul King.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve. Let's motion to approve. Okay, same thing.
Potato, patano.
True. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Council Paper Number 12,421. Communication Number 61 from Mayor Maxey recommending the appointment of Gabriel, Gabrielle Thomas to serve as a member of the Youth Commission for a term to expire August 27, 2027.
I move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Fitch, Counselor Shade, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,422. Communication Number 62 from Mayor Maxey presenting an order to authorize borrowing of $535,562 for the purchase of new computer software upgrade. Going to file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak to us on this, please?
So this is something that I'm very, very excited about. In 1995, when I started my full-time career with the City of North Adams, one of my first jobs was to implement our current financial software known as KVS. As I've talked about during budget prep, KVS has been discontinued, in a sense, and is no longer supported. It's 29 years old, and when I tell you, when I left the city in 2008 and came back recently in the last three years, nothing has changed to the system, nothing. It has served us well, it has been a good tool, but it is time for us to modernize. In between this implementation and now, we received a grant with the prior administration to purchase a software system through a grant, that we only got a couple modules, and it was very soon, as we started to work through that, that we realized the software wasn't municipally geared. At that point, the team really dug in, and we evaluated a couple other packages, and we feel that it is time for us to completely move off the KVS software and move on to Munis. Now, I will say, back in 1995, when we purchased KVS, the staff back then, Bev, I think you're the only one that's still here, and Cheryl, we really wanted Munis, and it was considered kind of, back then, the Cadillac of, excuse me, of software for municipalities. And as I said, KVS has served us well, but it's really time for us to move off the software as it's not supported anymore. And what I mean by that, if we have a payroll issue or a glitch with collections, there's no one out there that can help us with this software. And it makes you feel very unsteady, especially with your financials. So what I am proposing is that you approve the borrowing order to purchase Munis, so that would be the software package of all of the municipal financial programs, which includes treasure collector, accounts payable, general receipts, the assessing package, compass, as well as a citizen portal that people are going to be able to log in and say, hey, I got a pothole on North Street, hey, I got a pothole on Pleasant Street. And that will make us equal to where we are today, if not, well, it will make us better in the future. And then, once we get through that, then we will look at possibly adding on to online permitting, et cetera. So what's before you is really for the packaging system. And keep in mind, this also includes what we call the crosswalk for the school department, so that our general ledger talks to DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so some of our reporting will be streamlined. So the borrowing order itself covers all of the setup, the software, the training, and one year of annual subscription. The plan is that we will budget for the remaining years through our budget, which will be equal to what we are currently budgeting for our Springbrook software, which we really only have accounts payable on, the general ledger, and a portion of payroll, but it's not working smoothly or efficiently. And what really made me kind of hit pause was when we did the audit, finished out the audit of 23 or 24, and we've been doing some testing, the software that we purchased to kind of bridge, again, I wasn't part of that, really doesn't do the job of municipal reporting. So there's a lot of, when we talk about efficiencies, we took a step back there, and I'm not afraid to say that. But we've tried to work with it, we've come to the conclusion we can't, and this is what we need to do to really, when we say streamlining, we talk about hiring, to really make sure that our people are working with the best systems. What I like about Munis is they have great customer service, which has been an issue with the previous software, as well as now KVS isn't supported. They are on what we call SourceWell, so it doesn't have to be procured, it always, already has been procured for us. Many other municipalities, I think over 102 municipalities, are on Springbrook, I mean, I'm sorry, Munis, as well as many school departments use Munis as well. So my goal is to get all of our financials, to get all of our software to where it should be, back to the KVS days when we started in 1995, and then launch these new systems in it. And hopefully, within that, we'll be able to support that within our budget, that's the plan. As far as the borrowing order goes, you know, we plan to pay the first two years, as we do with a ban, a bond anticipation note, which will be interest only. In year three, we'll evaluate whether we're going to take that to long-term, or we're going to continue to pay one-third of it down. If we continue on the ban route, we have, you know, the full five years of that, otherwise, we'll take it to maturing debt with another general obligation note. But what we're feeling right now is we can keep it in the short-term borrowing world and support that through the debt service that's in our budget existing. So this is exciting for us. I dragged the staff out again tonight, so you can see their faces and maybe ask them questions, or not, but this has been a painful transition, and I just can't, I can't allow it to go on any longer. The team has been great, but we need the best tools to do the best job for our community, and this platform will help us do that.
Counselor Bona?
Yeah. I mean, part of it, it sounds like there's not really a choice if the, you know, company that does the software is sort of just not where it was, it's not answering, it's not, you know, the customer service, it sounds like it's becoming somewhat obsolete. That being said, I was just curious, was one of the reasons Unix back in 1995 wasn't selected, was it a cost, it was just way more expensive?
Yeah, it was very expensive at the time, so KVS came in at approximately $395,000, and Munis was more expensive, I don't remember at the time, and we were struggling to get off another system that we've had for a long time, Arlington Data, that was dying, we literally had one computer in each office. So when we look at it, and you think 29 years have gone by, and the cost to Munis is $535,000 and change, it's really not a lot of money for 29 years of inflation and advancement. So we really feel this is really what we need to do. Interestingly enough, former auditor Dave Fiero has gone to Williamstown, and he is using Munis, and so he's been kind of our little pilot, and he loves it, and he's kind of wrapping his whole brain around how he can help us with the conversion here. So the team itself, we're excited about this, we just need your authorization, and then, you know, our plan is we probably won't borrow anything till the next fiscal year, but we need the, I need to have the money in place and airmarked, so to say, so we can move forward.
Counselor Green?
A couple things. I think this is wonderful. In Adams in 2004, I was actually the one that recommended and designed Munis for Adams, and they've had it for 20 years. You know, it's like any software, there's pieces that you want to work on, but they were very, very receptive of the people that used it, and also, in Tyler Technology, which is Munis, they're great with customer service and training, they have a train the trainer, and we might want to take advantage of that, where you get one person that has extensive training, and then they can train, and that reduces the cost dramatically. A couple other questions. I see all the modules you're getting. This is the software side, is there any hardware that's going to need to be purchased to?
Yeah, so most of our computers were upgraded via COVID. System-wise, we're in good shape. Mark, as you know, through the budget process, has done a great job on the network, et cetera, but this will be a cloud-based software, so we are fully prepared for that. We may have to tweak a couple monitors, you know, specifically in the treasurer's office because their reports are long, instead of the regular monitors, but other than that, we're in pretty good shape, hardware-wise.
Printing, things like that?
I'm sorry?
Need to get new printers, you know?
Mark put in his budget this year for some higher-end printers, so we're in fairly good shape. The one piece that we may need to invest in, and again, as we dig in a little bit more, is the link-up to printing our bills, because there are some bills that we print, years ago, we used to use standard register, that system has since died, Mark programs it to get Bev's bills out, which necessarily isn't the best way, but Munis has a solution for that. So my feeling is, you know, we've been putting a Band-Aid on this for a bit, and it's time to move.
And you'll have all the buildings connected?
Yes.
Okay. The other question, it's about the debt, in the budget, I see we're capital planning, you have $425,000 in this year's budget planned for this purchase. A question, is this something that would be a good candidate to you, to buy outright? How much interest in the next two years, you know, because it's such a great asset, you know, we can't depreciate it or anything?
Well, yeah, I mean, it does, in year one, we're estimating we're going to pay about $26,000 in interest. Year two, we're estimating about a $25,000. So the total debt service, if we were to continue under a ban, a bond anticipation note, we would pay about $100,000 in interest.
Also, it's not bad.
It's not, it's not bad when you look at the total picture, and you look at what's coming off the debt schedule and what we can handle within our budget.
So it's very reasonable, it's not?
I, I, I think that for what we know today, you know, at the end of year two, Bev and I will be having a discussion whether we want to take this to long-term debt or not, depending on what the market is showing.
Yeah.
But we feel comfortable we can handle this within our current budget strategy that we have.
Okay.
And again, you know, referring to the, the capital improvement plan, it's been on our target for a while, and it should be.
Yeah.
Counselor Bona?
Yeah, a couple questions, I had to continue. You mentioned the annual subscription fee, what, what's that going to cost in the future, like, if it's going to be in the budget?
So we're estimating that the reoccurring annual subscription fee will be about, as I get my glasses here, $109,000. So to buy all the software, get us all set up, that's the 425, and then you add the 109. And that's not anything unique to what we've been paying for Springbrook, which is the second system, and pretty comparable to what we were paying when KVS was fully functioning. So it, it, it seems very reasonable for the powerful tool that we're, we're getting.
And you said everything included, so I'm guessing that's all data will easily transfer over?
About all the conversions, they'll do all the conversions, all the balancing out with us. That was a big thing when we went to Springbrook, things didn't really convert the way we were told that they were going to convert. We had a lot of crosswalk issues. This is the full municipal, this company is really, what they do is municipal work, and we are a little bit unique to other nonprofits, because we have to report to the Department of Revenue and DESI.
Counselor Green sort of touched on a little about the training, training trainers to train, but I'm, again, I'm going to assume that that price includes training?
Yes.
And is that, will there be additional, like, workloads on the employees for that training, or will they be able to squeeze it into their?
Anytime there's a conversion, there's additional work, let's not be fooled.
Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, it's sort of a comment more than a question, I, well, it's both. I picked up something that you mentioned, maybe hinting at staff retention, that this is going to improve staff retention. Is that kind of the case here?
They're burnt out.
Yeah. Are you going to stay here another year if we do this? It sounds like a good move if it's going to improve staff retention, is what I'm trying to say here.
I mean, quite frankly, I believe Dave Fiero would have still been here if he didn't have to deal with all the BS of the conversion of Springbrook. I apologize to parents. That, I mean, he really spent a lot of hours and really tried to work the system, and when Dave comes and says, I can't do it anymore, we've got to make a change, he's not one to complain, you know, and everybody's like, yeah, what Dave said.
Thank you for explaining that. Sounds good.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to the mayor, I have a couple of questions. My first question is around cybersecurity, and how will this be an improvement of our current software?
Yep.
And what's in place to protect?
Yep. So our current, our current software sits on our server, which is not good, even though Mark has many firewalls around it, it's still sitting here in good old North Adams. Secondly, with your second part of your question, they guarantee the secure site. They guarantee there's mechanisms and firewalls built in. Both the IT director on the school side and Mark Pearson on the city side have said, if you don't go to a cloud-based software, we're quitting. It's the way of the world.
Understand.
And we have, we have a joke in-house when something goes wrong with our email, you know, we say, the hackers are there, the hackers are there, you know, lockdown, it's an internal joke. But the reality is, you know, for security reasons, we'll gain more points as we look to evolve and apply for grants if we have this type of system with all the bells and whistles.
Absolutely. My second question actually relates to that. What can this software do in terms of helping us acquire new grants or new funding in the future?
Yeah, it'll show, it'll show that we're progressing to the future. Yeah, it'll, it'll show, it'll show that we're progressing to the future instead of having a 29-year-old system that, you know, you can't support anymore. It'll interface with us better with a lot of the Department of Revenue reporting and even the end-of-year report, which the school department is required to do. So we are hoping that a lot of our reporting mechanisms will be easier for our staff instead of running reports and then having to key them. A big thing is our crossposting. So when you come in and you pay your water bill, under the old system, we could just spin that and it would update the Water GL on the auditor's side. Now, we can't do that because we haven't, they haven't developed the water package yet, even though that was one of the first things that was supposed to happen. So there is a lot of handposting that's going on now, which, you know, we're human. People make mistakes, which creates us when we're balancing to have to go back two or three times. You know, we took a step back when we went to Springbrook. And now we're trying to take 10 steps forward.
Thank you. When would this potentially be implemented? When are we looking for a start date?
Yeah, so, you know, it's September. Let's face it, it's September. The team and the school side is focusing on, on opening school. We're really just rounding out the fiscal year '23 audit. The team is very anxious, but once we get approval and we have the funding appropriated, we will have that conversation. I'd like to have a January 1st start with, with, you know, probably GL. I don't want to wait to a new fiscal year because we're struggling right now. I mean, everything is in balance, but the team is really putting in an extra effort to get us there and it really is a step, a step back.
Excellent. And then finally, last question. With this new software, how much more efficient will the city be in being able to send out bills, do taxes, notify different departments of payments and accounts?
So as I said, you know, it's equal to, if not that, more powerful than what we have. The link-up with sending out bills and notices will be more efficient because the report writer is that much more robust. Right now, like today, the building department computer isn't talking to the GL. So January 5th, when you come in, everybody will be talking to each other and we can see that kind of stuff. But we haven't done a lot of development in, you know, modularizing the forms and that kind of stuff because we can't get to that online platform through the system we have that's 29-years-old and the system that was purchased a few years ago. So this will help us take steps to get there. But the key is to get our, I don't want to use the expression, but I, I will, our house in order in the sense of our system that we rely on every day, KVS, is on life support.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Breen?
A quick question. You said you, you got a, a software package through a grant. Is there any residual value that we can do with that or is it, it's done?
It's done, unfortunately.
Counselor Bona?
Yeah. Last two things. One, you mentioned, does the school has some part of this?
Yes.
And, and is any of it going to be paid for by school budget?
That's part of what we, we report on the end-of-year report as a city share towards education. So at, under this funding strategy, no. That is things that we've always capitalized under the end-of-year report, like we do health insurance.
Yeah.
So that's how we'll recoup that as we get points towards our net school spending and our, our costs that we contribute to education. Think of the school department as just another department, like the fire department or public services.
I understand, but sometimes we get financed, you know, funding comes different through the school department that can pay for things. And one thing, which I'm not sure if it's exactly how I'm understanding it, but it sort of excites me because for two, three administrations, every time we heard about WebUp, our website being upgraded and everything, you mentioned like citizens would be able to report potholes and things like that are, they obviously see. Will there actually be something visual that citizens can see? So it might say, "Pothole, North Holden Street," and then it actually shows updated, like it was fixed?
The fixed part, I'm not sure, but it will give us better reporting tools internally to see what the requests are and to monitor those.
So does that just go internally or can citizens go to and see a page and know this has already been reported, like they don't need to post it 100 more times?
Yeah, it won't have that look. It'll have the ability to pull down, "I want to send a request to Public Services." And then where it will help us is we'll know how many requests have gone to Public Services. We'll know how many requests have gone to the library. We'll know how many requests have gone to the city clerk. And we'll be able to look at those analytics and the department head should be following up with their teams. You know, now it's like telephone tack. You send an email, we forward it, but we never, it, there is an ability, it's like a work order for the department to push that through.
I would still like to see something down the road. And again, I'm sure it's something more, but I've seen it where other communities, people can go to a page, they can see
The progress.
That where the problem was listed and then they can see detail, you know, DPWs, fixed it, you know, it's crossed off the list.
Yeah, so when we, when we demoed it on our side, we looked at it from the workflow point of view, but I can ask them that question and see if that's something, when we put it in workflow that it's completed, does it kick over to that request and maybe send an email back that says, "Thank you for your concern. This pothole was fixed on whatever day."
Thank you.
No, thank you for your question. And if I could, Counselor Sepianza, you asked a question about, does the school contribute? So there was a balance that the grant didn't cover when Springbrook was purchased and the school department did pay that. For, it was for the grants management software that wasn't originally included.
Okay, I have one last question. As I understand it right now, our city data is stored locally in the building on servers here.
Correct, except for the modules that are on Springbrook.
Okay. How about this new system? This is totally off.
Cloud-based, yes, totally off-base.
Because they're going to quit if we don't.
Yeah. Or heaven forbid the building gets hit by lightning and that server happens to be part of, you know?
Actually, the server itself, you want to hear a scary thought, is in the public safety building.
Mark's not going to be happy you said that.
No, I just, that's the truth.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, that is kind of a, a little bit of a scary thought that think that's in there.
It's in a lock cell though, so.
Behind the cardboard window.
Any further questions? Okay, let's move on to the order. Council Paper Number 12,422, in order to authorize the appropriation in the amount of $535,562 for the purpose of the purchase and installation of computer software-assisted integrated financial management and accounting system. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow a set amount pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 9, to issue bonds and notes therefore. And let me read the order into the record. Okay. Ordered that the city, this is dated August 27, 2024, that the city appropriates the amount of $535,562 for the purpose of paying the cost associated with the purchase and installation of a computer software-assisted integrated financial management and accounting system and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Paragraphs, or Chapter 7, Paragraph 9, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and to take any other action relative thereto. And further ordered, the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth to qualify under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44A, any and all bonds of the city authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Excuse me. I know I can't call point of order, but I'm, just want to clarify, this needs to be published. So a motion to approve and publish as required by law.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Counselors, thank you. I feel like I'm Lisa tonight.
So we need to... Okay, can we get a motion?
I think you had one.
He had a motion.
Do we have?
Well, I made a motion to approve, but I'll make the motion to publish as required by law.
Second?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. All right. I'm going to call a roll call vote for this, please.
Just a first reading? This is just the first reading?
This is the first reading.
Yeah, we don't need a roll call. It's not the official vote. The next one will be.
No. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion passes.
Um, excuse me, just point of clarification. I don't want to tell you how to run, but my notes say, "Loan or borrowing order requires two third vote of the council, two readings, two roll calls, advertise 10 days."
Then, then?
I, that's what my notes say, my little cheat sheet from way back when, unless you've changed the rules.
We're not voting tonight. We're just passing it. No, she said, "But two roll calls." She did say two? Okay.
Oh, let's start over.
Okay, let's call for a roll call vote on that, please.
I'll take the blame for that.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Olefskew?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sepianza?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Council Paper Number 12,423, a communication from Counselor Fitch requesting time for a presentation by the North Adams Community Housing Organization, known as NACHO, regarding opportunities for North Adams in addressing housing shortage and affordability.
It takes a few minutes to come up.
Okay.
Before we start, I'm going to let you know that when we hit the 10-minute mark, we're going to have to pause. And if this goes beyond 10 minutes, we're going to have to have a motion to continue this beyond the 10 minutes.
Fantastic. I have a timer ready to go.
Perfect.
Point of order?
Yeah.
So we have a brief explanation of what we're doing by the host of the communication?
Yes, Counselor Fitch?
Thank you, yes. Yeah, Lilian, thank you so much for coming from NACHO tonight, for doing all of this research and finding what the state has already passed and clarifying what the state has already passed and clarifying and giving recommendations to North Adams as well, so that we can take steps here to develop more housing and encourage and support our residents to develop more housing, oftentimes in their existing lots and existing houses. So thank you for coming here and giving this presentation.
Thank you, counselor. So my name is Lilian Zavatsky. I'm a member of the North Adams Community Housing Organization, NACHO, and this is part two of a presentation. So many of you might remember that, oh no, that in April, Virginia Riel presented on the Affordable Housing Act. Did we know what? Oh, we lost my presentation. Hold on.
The question's earned.
In the meantime?
Counselor Wilkinson?
Why is this limited to 10 minutes?
That's what they asked for in the, did they actually, no, they actually did not.
The request on the communication says 5 to 10 minutes for a presentation.
But I had some indication, yes.
Is that a council rule?
It was a request by the host.
Yeah.
Request by the host for 10 minutes.
Okay.
Same silly.
Can you hear it? It's worrying.
Did it disconnect?
Did the clock start?
From the other side? Do you mind if I am?
But I don't see the.
Thank you for helping, Mayor Maxi.
I'm not an IT person, but I'll try.
We just gave you half a million dollars here. Let's, let's use it.
I'm an end user. I'm converted. I'm no good with hardware.
It's on the back of the last page. Back of the last page.
Is that on? Can you see that blinking?
It is blinking.
The communication.
And it's worrying.
Oh, it's the back of the last page.
Yeah.
I don't have it.
Usually flashes green on the backside here too, but I don't see that.
It's over here on this side.
I'm so sorry, Lilian.
It's okay. Worst-case scenario, I can just present without it, but it, it has some useful visuals, I think, so I'd like to, I'd like to try.
Throw a new projector and software package that you're buying?
No, it's coming on, but it's not picking up the computer.
Source H90 signal.
It's so exciting.
The technology in this room.
It was briefly showing.
It's showing, yeah.
Which is very.
Is everything?
Was anything?
Do you have another port on this?
No. Andrew, didn't we have this problem with your laptop once?
We did, yeah. I wonder if it's a problem with the cable or something.
We have another cable.
Is it the same cable?
Yeah.
Is this presentation on the hard drive or is it on the thumb drive?
Um, I downloaded a file.
Yeah. Do you want to email it to me and like try with?
Yeah.
It's in the cloud.
Because I have my laptop here, which I know does work with the system, so.
Time's to me, I always post it, postpone to next meeting. I'm just saying.
What is the?
Image not displayed. Is the image not out there?
I think I'm just, I'm going to go for a raw.
Okay.
Thank you, Lilian.
No, no, it's okay. What's up there?
If we did see it.
I can kind of turn my laptop around if there comes a point where things are unclear without a visual, but I, I think we'll be okay.
Was this the presentation?
Yeah, that's the presentation.
So we have it in front of us?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Can we get somebody to turn on the lights?
I'm on that too.
Thank you. Perfect.
All right. Yeah, so kind of just starting from the beginning. In April, Virginia Riel came to the council and presented about the Affordable Housing Act. At that point, this was legislation in the state that the House and the Senate were still discussing. And I'm here before you today because on August 6th, the, the governor passed the Affordable Homes Act. And this is really a historical moment. The governor approved $5.16 billion worth of funding authorization for housing. And the last time the, the state passed a housing bill, it was for $1.8 billion in 2018. So this is almost three times the amount that the state put forward last time. And it's really responding to a need. It's responding to a housing need at a national level, at a state level, and also at a local level. In addition to the $5, $5 billion, there's also 50 different policy initiatives that are bundled with the bill. And the, there's different pots of money in the bill. The largest pot of money is $2.2 billion for public housing. And of that, $500,000 is going towards North Adams, the North Adams Housing Authority, which is really exciting. Part of that is a promise to public housing residents that, you know, their, the living conditions that they've been living haven't been invested in sufficiently and so the state's really putting money behind that. So we will see some of those effects locally. The next highest bucket of funding is $1.3 billion, which is for housing production and preservation, which we will be able to make use of, I hope. Before we talk more about the bill, I really want to focus us on two numbers. And this, these two numbers are going to bring us, have us focus on North Adams. And the first number that I want to talk about is the number one. So if you were to take a map of the city of North Adams and you were to split that map into grids equalling one acre each, you could put one person on every acre of land. One way to think about that number is that one person supports one acre's worth of city services. So the streets that are required to, that are in that acre, the access to landfill, the, the access to schooling, the snow removal, things of that nature. Obviously, that's oversimplified because we get money from the state and then we also have children. Obviously, that's oversimplified because we get money from the state and then we also have children. But it's one way to think about, like, why doesn't the city have money, is because we have one person per acre. So, we either need to get more money from the state, increase our people per acre, or decrease services. The second number that I want us to focus on is 1.8. And we have 1.8 residential units per residential acre in our city. 1.8 units per residential acre in our city. So, that's pretty low density for our residential areas in our city. I have a lovely zoning map of North Adams, and a lot of people, a lot of like what we think of the communities in North Adams, the neighborhoods, they're in the highest density zoning, R5 zoning and R4 zoning. In R5 zoning, we are allowed to have up to 12 units per acre. Um, and in R4 zoning, it's about almost eight units per acre. So, um, it's only when you get to R2 zoning, R2 zoning actually allows only 1.8, um, units per acre. So, in that 1.8 number, I see a lot of potential. Uh, Boston has a densi, uh, density of 30 units per acre, we don't have to be a Boston, we don't have to put, you know, 20 unit apartment buildings on every single corner, but from 1.8, there's a lot of room to grow. Okay, so, the first thing that I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about one specific part of the housing legislation that's really relevant towards, towards the city council, and then I'm going to just point out a couple of additional items in the legislation that might be helpful to the city at large. So, the part that's really relevant towards the city council is a section on the accessory dwelling units. So, the first thing that the state does is defines accessory dwelling units. So, accessory dwelling units are, it's a residential unit that has an entrance, it has a bed, it has a kitchen, it has a bathroom. And that unit can be, according to the state now, an attic apartment, a basement apartment, it can be attached, or it can be detached. Um, the state has also defined that ADUs are maximum 900 square feet, and there's, they, they might have to be lower than that, there's some nuance which we can talk about. Um, and the state also says they don't have to be owner occupied. There's a lot of benefits to ADUs, I want us to think about that 1.8 number again. So, ADUs, uh, and there's a wonderful slide here, um, that I will tell you about where, where it comes from later, but it points out, um, some of the benefits to ADUs. ADUs are a really quick and flexible way of increasing, uh, the availability of affordable housing. Um, ADUs are, uh, they preserve the character of a ne, of a neighborhood. They do not really change, um, the, the character of a neighborhood much, so as far as like of housing goes, they're one of the least controversial ways of increasing housing. Um, they also have spoken to seniors that want to build ADUs in their backyards, so they can have additional rental units. I've spoken to seniors that can no longer keep up their houses, that want to build ADUs to move into. Um, so there's a huge population in North Adams that I think is interested in this. Um, in addition, um, they, like, the, ADUs and ADU legislation reinforces property rights. If you have a property and you know how to build an ADU, then, and you are able to build an ADU, then it reinforces your property rights as a property owner. So, the second thing that the state does is it says that municipalities have to allow or cannot disallow whatever, uh, ADUs, they have to allow ADUs by right in single-family residential zoning units, oh, sorry, zoning districts. Um, and the state puts in other requirements in place that says municipalities can't require ADUs to be owner occupied, they can't put in ownerless parking requirements, and there's certain things that they, that, um, they have put in place to make it easier to build ADUs. And, and so every municipality, including North Adams, has until February 2nd of next year to look at our zoning code and to make changes to comply with the state law. Right now, um, you can build ADUs in North Adams. However, from my understanding and conversations I've had, no part of the building code was written with ADUs and the way that they're used today specifically in mind. Um, back in 2021, the Community Development Office put forward a proposal for ADU language in the zoning ordinance. There's a section of the zoning code for special uses, um, which is section 10, and it has things like solar areas and whatever. And so, the Community Development Office actually proposed two different sections to be added. Uh, one of those sections was on accessory dwelling units. And I think it's worth, um, worth the city look at that kind of language. Again, a lot of that falls in line with what the state requirements are. It's my understanding, although I'm not entirely sure why that, um, proposal was dropped, that part of the reason the proposal was dropped was to wait for the state to put in, put rules in place around ADUs. And so, now we have some language from the state about what they're looking for, and so I think it's, I think it's time to revisit. Um, so, th, these are the things that we're asking for, from you guys. So, one is to review and make changes to the zoning ordinances around ADUs specifically. And I really think that that proposal from the Community Development Office is, is a great easy place to start, we have some copies here. Um, and the next thing that, you know, once we have ordinance in place that doesn't guarantee that we're going to be able to actually capitalize on this opportunity, so we really need education. We need to make sure that the council and the city employees are educated around the, the new policy, um, but also developers, also banks, so people can finance these things, and also the public. So, the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, um, is where a lot of these, um, funding streams and, um, a lot of the parts of the housing bill are going to fall under, and they are creating a resource guide for ADUs. So, that's coming soon. And there's a lot, like, there's a lot of questions I had when reading the legislation, there's a lot of questions that are still kind of open-ended uh, around what the state is looking for, what are the, like, the tax implications and all these things for ADUs? And the, the Executive Office of Living and, Housing in Livable Communities is, is creating some resources around that. And I know Berkshire Regional Planning Committee is also looking at that as well. So, there's questions to be answered, but I think we should start now looking at this stuff. All right, so that is the section on ADUs, just really quickly, there's lots and lots of money available, like I said, it's 5.1, 5.16 billion dollars. There is money for, um, lots of money for public housing, for greening public housing, there's money for development of affordable housing really broadly, there's money for office conversions. We've spoken to developers locally that are interested in, that have been interested in converting offices to residential units, and have found that the financing, like, the numbers just don't work, and so now there's money for that. If we want to, you know, court developers for any of the large properties that the city owns, there's money for, there's tax credits, and there's money that can be part of a financing stack, so we can make, like, some larger projects more, um, attractive. There's money for mixed income multifamily housing, there's money for supportive housing, I work for the Breen Center, um, you know, the housing for people with disabilities and, and mental health issues, that's something we might be interested in. And I also have a slide here, which you guys can see, but there's things that were discussed, we just wanted to mention, that were discussed in the process of this legislation that didn't go through, um, rent control, transfer tax. And then we also, just for the benefit of the counselors, because you all can't see, we actually looked at the Vision 2030 Plan, and there's many different ways in which, um, the opportunities in this housing legislation align with the, um, the priorities laid forward in the Vision 2030 Plan. And that's it, uh, available for questions. Ten minutes, twenty-two seconds, counselor.
Very good. Okay, uh, Council Breen or Council Bona, who had their hand up first? Go ahead, Council Breen.
I, I just have a quick question. I understand that zoning laws, uh, some developments have written into the deeds, you know, like, single-family homes, you know, no multifamily homes. How can you address the, um, affordable units, like, to put, if it's on the deed? Is that, is that addressed at all in the, in the act?
Um, I don't believe so. I think really the goal of that legislation is so that municipalities don't make it unduly difficult for property owners to build ADUs. So, I don't think that there's any part of it that's like a, a stick for property owners, or, uh, to, like, force them to change their deed to allow ADUs in the future, if that makes sense? I, I just don't think it's geared towards...
But I just want to, like, you could have a housing development, sixty, seventy houses, and it's in the deeds. And say you want to put in an affordable, you know, a mother-in-law apartment, you know, or something like that. It's restricted to, to do that because, um, it's in the deed, it's not, it's not in the zoning, it's in the actual deed.
Oh, I see, like, a, like a housing development, I'm not sure, I think that's a great question for a lawyer, yeah.
Council Bona?
Yeah, a couple of things, I, well, there was many things I heard, but a couple of things, um, the, you know, you kept saying there's money for this, there's money for this, there's money for this. So, if people are outside listening, how are they understanding that? They could be saying, I possibly have this space that I could convert in my house to an ADU, there's grant money available, tax incentive, you know, what is, what is that money that's available when people are listening?
So, most of that money is, this, that my understanding of the $5 billion is it's a menu that the state can authorize funding for, so really, this is not directly available to the public just of yet. Like, nonprofits and municipalities will apply for projects using some of those funds, and then the state will authorize it. As of right now, um, a lot of those pots of money are not, like, direct to consumer. There are tax credits, I don't know if I have any of them listed. Let's see. They're not, but there are, there's some tax credits.
But, so, so specifically, John Doe has a house, he has something, an attic, he could convert into an ADU. It's not like there's a grant or something he can apply to, to do that, it's not that simple.
There's a couple of steps of separation right now.
Okay. And then the other thing I think I caught on, because there are some things you're saying the city maybe would have to change or do, and I think one of them was, uh, about parking, parking spaces that are required for, for houses. I think right now, if you're to split a house into apartments, you're required to have two parking spaces per unit. And you're saying this would, this would be something the city would have to change, or this is a state law that says it's allowed? Is that what I was understanding?
So, for, for ADUs, the, uh, the, there's parking language in what the state passed, and basically, an ADU has to have one parking space. However, if the ADU is within half a mile of a bus station, and I think, like, North Adams, the main street would count, because that's the hub of bus routes, then they don't have to have a parking space. How that actually plays out in the zoning code, I'm not an expert, but that's my understanding, that we wouldn't be able to require more parking spaces than, um, one per unit, or zero if we're within half a mile of, of the bus, bus station.
Good, thank you.
Council Wilkinson, and then Counselor.
I just wanted to add something to what you said about the, um, uh, in answer to your first question, Keith. I think one of the things that we said in thoughts about things that are needed here has to do with either using state prepared materials or Regional Planning Commission materials, or tailoring those materials, so that the public can have access to the kind of information you were describing. I think it's not defined enough at the state level right now, so we couldn't write that today. But, I think as that evolves, and those materials either are made by others, or we can tailor them to this community, that that's something we can do that would be really helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Wilkinson?
Well, I needed some extra money. So, this came about, and I decided to build an ADU, but it's going to be a short-term rental. I read in your pamphlet here, I saw short-term rentals in there. Can you enlighten us as to, it, does that make short-term rentals more legal? And would it bypass the city ordinances that we have presently for short-term rentals?
No, um, I don't, so, if, wherever your short-term rental is located, or wherever you want to put a short-term rental, you would still have to follow the short-term rental ordinance. So, I don't know, I haven't read the short-term rental ordinance close enough to know whether or not it says in there, you cannot place this in an ADU, um, but you would have to get it inspected, you would have to kind of follow all the ordinances in the city.
Wanted to know how one related to the other, that's all.
Well, I think the reason that short-term rentals come up a lot for ADUs is that's a common use case for them, but they don't have to be, they can be long-term rentals as well.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just, um, if you go back to 29...
Okay.
On the first thing, it says that, it, that the, that, um, you, the cities or jurisdictions can make reasonable regulations, including but not limited to site plan review, dimensional setbacks, restrictions on the bulk and height of the structures, and restrictions and prohibition of short-term rental ADUs. So, that is at the discretion of the city.
Sounds like a job for the planning board. Council Oleskiewicz?
So, the $5.8 billion that keeps being spoken of, it's really not clearly defined, is it available to the municipalities to be seeking this funding?
It doesn't exist.
And building this housing? That's one question.
Yeah, so the, the housing legislation, I, I do have it up here as well. It breaks that, all of that $5 billion up into different funds, and those funds, some of those funds, um, are existing funds that now the state is funding at a higher level, some of those funds are new funds. So, the answer is like, yes, the city is available to apply for some of that, but not all of that. And then there's some that are, already have well-defined, um, application guidelines and some that don't.
So, the money that, I mean, I, you can say, you can speak, unless I see you wanting to get up and give an answer to this. It's, to me, it's sounding like you're looking for the city to come, to chase this money down, and us to build the housing. I mean, a few years ago, we cleared the pathway for developers to come in with 40R, and we haven't seen anybody bite at this one yet. And then on the second note, you had talked about with the ADUs and rent control. As far as I know, in, in, uh, state of Massachusetts, there is no rent control. So, how do we?
There is near Boston.
How do you keep this under the affordable housing news that you talked about, when there's no, there's no laws on rent, rent control?
Oh, you're saying that there, yeah, there's no laws on rent and control, it's illegal in Massachusetts.
It is.
And that was not passed in the state level. So, it's, one of the main issues we have with housing right now in the country is housing supply. Housing demand far outstrips housing supply, this addresses housing supply. Um, there are ways, so, and also I'm not, we're not asking the city to hunt down the money necessarily, the money is available. We're kind of making that, um, information known. Um, the, the main thing that we actually were here to, to do today is talk about the ADU part. Um, there is money available, and I, I am by no means an expert in all these grants and all these, I mean, it's like alphabet soup, and there's a million, you know, um, there's a million requirements, or you kind of have to, you, you have to be a, a grant writer to, to navigate around that. Um, I think with ADUs, the ask is pretty simple, if you, if you make it part of the zoning ordinance kind of spelled out for people, um, the city can choose to, depending on how much, you know, extra energy they have, do extra things, make, you know, make resources, talk to Greylock, talk to Mountain One, see if they'll, you know, create some interesting, like, financing packages. But in terms of step one, would be just making, making the ordinance available. I don't know if that answered your question?
We tried this like twenty years ago. Keith, when you were here at that point, under the Barrett administration, so, housing? I mean, through the chair, I do recall at one time we had a first buyers, uh, first home buyers incentive that actually was through the Community Development Office, um, because I actually got it. When I bought, purchased my first home, I remember before I was a city counselor, uh, meeting with Michael Novalli, and my wife and I purchased our first home. At the time, the interest rates were 12 percent, so, we got a, we got a deal, I think we got our mortgage at 9 percent. But, um, and it was also required less being put down. Um, as for the ADUs, again, where I think I'm still confused, is, you know, I'm picturing people who could have that possible basement apartment, possible attic apartment, you even mentioned garage, I think, is... And then, and then when you said there's money there, money there, you put together the two together, and I'm thinking someone out there is thinking, I'm going to be able to get money. Now, it's probably more a case of, I'm going to be able to get maybe a loan easier, or maybe not have to pay as high a percentage, but I don't, like, it, it sounds too soon to say, is there actually grants available? And then if they do convert, I mean, today, converting an attic or a basement apartment is probably not going to be cheap. So, you know, is it at the end, if they do that, going to actually create an affordable apartment versus, at least it's adding an apartment? So, um, because I, it sounds like, like programmer, I could tell people, hey, you got, you can convert or add some more housing to your unit, but, um, but if it's just saying you can do that, they're going to say, well, I can do that now, I just don't have the money to do it. Or, why is that affordable for me to do that?
I had, yeah, just two things on that, I, I really do think that the first step is to, but the, the grants and who gets awarded the grants, that's going to shake out in the next couple of months. Um, hopefully, you know, some of our local actors will receive some of those grants. And, and the, the step from the city that would make it easy for people to take advantage of those grants is to know what the rules they have to follow are when they do try to build an ADU. Um, there are programs, I know, um, like specifically with CDBG, uh, funding, like in Adams, where the city will help people remodel, you know, their multifamily units, or their, I'm, I'm not sure the... or their, I'm, I'm not sure the details of, of the program, but will help, help developers like remodel some of their units. In exchange, they have to follow, um, like they have to rent to people of low income. Um, I don't know the details of that grant, but there, there are ways to kind of tie one thing to the other.
Thank you.
Counselor Fitch?
Yes, I'm glad we're talking about incentive programs, because this is something that the city could do if we wanted to stimulate this. We could help support our residents in doing this. You know, speaking of Adams as well, they have the housing rehabilitation program where they give grants to people for up to $35,000 to help them fix up their homes. And so, if we did want our residents to build ADUs, we could create a similar program in that way. Um, you know, that's up to the administration to do, of course, but Adams does leverage their community development block grant program and uses those funds in that way. So that's a possibility for us.
Counselor Bone?
You know, one thing that I, I brought to the council probably several years ago, and you know, it got knocked down fairly quick, for the reason of the state just doesn't allow it, but, is, you know, I wanted to see if the city could somehow offer an a tax incentive to developers who would purchase some of our worst blighted houses. I mean, we have houses in this community that are just sitting there emptying, you know, empty, rotting away, where, um, probably right now, with the market of what some properties are selling for, you are seeing some people take advantage of fixing them up, because they're actually are able to get a decent, a better market value for them. However, um, you know, I don't know, like I say, if there are things out there. One of the reasons we couldn't fall for is there were some incentives available out there for communities, but they were only for gateway cities, and those were for cities who had populations of 35,000 or more. But yet, you know, I always think of what, uh, you know, Mayor Alkenbryte would say, he goes, you know, we're sort of a rural community with urban challenges, and we clearly have neighborhoods and areas that, um, again, are condensed, and you see these, these, these pieces of blight, and it would be great if there was some kind of incentive where funding could help a developer. And all I was looking for at the time was to be able to freeze a tax assessment until that developer had it fully rented or sold, you know, because, uh, but the state just doesn't allow it, you know, for, for those kind of projects. Maybe this is something that will change.
Okay, any further questions?
I just, I'm. Just to go back to, to Pete's comment about, you know, well, what's our job here? And I, I want to say, don't underestimate the importance of you and the mayor and the city as conveners, as collaborators, as supporters of things. You don't necessarily have to do it all. Sometimes you're an enabler in a legislative way, but also, you know, you can be, you can, I, I talked to a very well-informed developer last week, who had no idea what was in this legislation, an important developer in our community. So there is a lot of information sharing and ways of working with people that you have the power to do, I think. You know, you could call a, a public meeting, you could have speakers come, you know, I mean, I think there are things, and, and we as an organization would be happy to work with you on that, but I think you have an important role to play to provide that leadership.
Counselor Fitch?
Could I move to refer this to the administration? Is this an appropriate time to do that?
Really wasn't any motion attached to this.
Just a communication?
Communication.
Just a communication, so.
Okay, I guess I'll just state what my hope is then? Is that all right?
You, you can state what your hope is, yeah.
I, I thought I would be able to refer to the administration, my apologies, but some things that I'm curious about are just seeing if our administration does have recommendations for changes to the zoning ordinances that would make sense for our city, and that we're no, we're not stepping on anyone's toes. Also, seeing if we could create a toolkit for residents, and seeing if we could find a stimulus program, or create some sort of a stimulus program to support people. So, that's what I would have referred.
I, I think that more research is needed to be done on this legislation to see how and when monies will be distributed and through what avenues. So I think, being this legislation has just passed, if I remember correctly, it was only passed like a few weeks ago. I think that we need to, hopefully, the state will come out, will be more forthcoming with more information regarding this, and I think at that time, later on, we would be able to make better informed choices and to be able to move forward with this.
We do have until February to make changes, I believe.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any licenses tonight. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for open forum? Please step up to the mic and name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. Josh Valiers, 18 and a half, Hall Street. I'm very excited, the election, first election of the fall is coming up next week, next Tuesday, um, and so in sharing the, uh, the tides of the season, so to speak, I'd like to remind everybody of the, uh, the dates for each election. Uh, September 3rd, next Tuesday, will be the state primary, um, and there is opportunity for early voting. Um, this coming, or this, this week goes until Friday. Uh, you have until Friday at 5:00 PM to early vote in person. Um, and then there are two other, uh, big elections coming up, one being on October 8th. It's a special election to, um, vote for, uh, vote in favor or otherwise of the Greylock Elementary School project. Um, it is, uh, there is time for in-person early voting on September 28th, um, that's a Saturday, and then the following Monday through Friday, uh, September 30th through October 4th. And then there is the presidential and state general election on November 5th. So please, everybody get out to vote, very important, make your voices heard. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Please step up to the mic, name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Paula Malloy, and my family and I have resided on 18 Rickert Street in North Adams for the past 24 years. Recently, the commercial zoning change requested by Taurus for the 935 State Road property was passed. For the past several months, we have respectively communicated with city council members as well as Taurus in the hopes of a positive outcome for all parties involved. When this zoning change was requested, we received no notification from the city regarding this request, nor did any of our neighbors. From that point on, we attended city council meetings regularly and spoke periodically with the expectations that our concerns would be heard. There was even a mutual agreement by Taurus and us that was presented to the city requesting their assistance to provide a positive outcome for both parties. While Taurus plans were to transform their current home on the property into office space, we were simply looking for peace of mind that nothing further could transpire in this location. As at one point, additional laundry and maintenance facilities were spoken of being developed. There appeared to be viable options where an agreement could be drafted and be favorable for both parties. It was very evident over the past month or so that no further time was to be spent by the city to potentially protect our interests as a homeowner in North Adams, and the lack of response to our concerns via email was unacceptable. We strongly feel that during this entire process, we have been respectful and willing to make a fair compromise to help meet the business needs of the city. At this point, the outcome is the outcome, and although we are not happy with it, we are more irritated with the fact that as in a butter, we felt somewhat ignored. Going forward, we will try to remain positive that no further development on the 935 State Road property will take place other than what was stated. However, if this agenda item is revisited in the future, it would be reassuring to know that our city representatives are here to look out for the residents of North Adams and not just our business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum?
Sure, just a couple, um, quick updates on events. Our last concert will be tomorrow at Windsor Lake at 6:30 for the season. Um, that starts at, at 6:30 at Windsor Lake, rain or shine, hopefully, we're going to try to squeeze one more in. Also, on Saturday, August 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 on the City Hall lawn, we will be having an overdose awareness event, if anyone would like to join us. And tentatively, I say tentatively, on Thursday, September 12th, we are going to have another community forum in regards to the notch reservoir operation and the resiliency plan that has caused a lot of questions, concerns, comments. Um, so Mass Audubon and that group will be in, we're going to invite everyone who has contacted us to join us. We'll do some advertising once we secure the date, but we're tentatively aiming for Thursday, September 12th. I know Counselor Fitch, you were interested in that as well. So those are my updates for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is, um, where do you, are you gonna, is it going to take place?
Right here in council chambers.
Okay. Committee reports and minutes. Hearing none. Liaison updates, counselor concerns. Counselor Shade.
Yes, um, through the chair to the mayor, a quick question. I know a lot of people in the city have seen recent articles in regards to the condition of Brighton. Can you give us an update on what the status is, please?
Yeah, so, um, over the summer, um, the status of Brighton, meaning which part of Brighton, the moving in?
The, the mold issue.
Okay. Um, so, over the summer, we did some, uh, what we determined is mold remediation, um, cleaned one room, the carpet was removed, repainted, um, of course, we did all of that, shut the doors, and then when the staff came back and opened the doors, there were, um, mold on their equipment, et cetera. Um, since then, uh, we've done additional cleaning, we've put more, um, air into those areas, and working with CTC about getting more air circulation through those areas. Um, the facilities director is, um, working on determining whether we need to rip out the remaining carpet in that section. It's not the whole floor, it's like the, one of the wings on the bottom floor that do not have windows. The other portion of the wing has, um, some windows. Um, so we're evaluating that. We knew that we had an issue there, we thought that what we did this summer rectified it, and then of course, when you close the doors and, and, you know, things appear. Um, so the superintendent and the facilities director, Bob Flaherty, is on that. Of course, um, it's made the newspaper. Um, we are moving some things around, but school will open as planned on Thursday, um, and we're addressing it as it comes. But there's no doubt in anyone's mind that there is a moisture issue on that bottom floor. Anybody who toured with us, um, probably could smell it when you walked in. Um, and despite all of the cleaning, once we closed it all up, we discovered that the problem was a little bit more than what maybe was anticipated. Um, but it is being addressed in real time. Um, that's my update today.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for asking.
Any other counselor concerns? Counselor Fitch?
Yes, um, it's, this may be a communication, but hopefully that's okay. The Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study is out there in the world, and, um, some people I realize are already aware of this, but Mass DOT has completed their initial study and has shared this study publicly, and it's, so it's now open for public comment, and I believe it's open for a public comment for 60 days. That's on Saturday, October 12th. So if people are interested in commenting on this, you know, positively or not, or asking questions about this rail study, which would connect North Adams to Boston in something like two hours and 48 minutes, I believe, I'm excited about this. That doesn't mean you have to be too, but we can comment on their website. And so it's mass.gov/northern-tier-passenger-rail-study. You can also just Google Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study, and it'll come up, and you'll see the section here where you can submit a comment online. So please consider doing so and advocating, if you're interested in advocating for this.
Thank you. Okay, I have one, uh, one message here. As the mayor stated, Thursday, the kids will be starting back to school, which means there'll be school buses, and small kids, pedestrians, people walking around. I ask everybody that they take a little bit of extra time to getting to where they need to go. Slow down through your school zones. Uh, I want to remind everybody that East Main Street, between the downtown area and the top of the hill there by Pleasant Street, is 20 miles per hour during school time. So, just want to remind everybody, and there'll be school buses all over, watch for them. The stops may have changed this year with the different rearrangement of the schools, so you may not be expecting a bus to stop in an area where it has in the past, so. That's all I have to say on that. Um, any correspondence? I'm sorry, Counselor Bone?
Yeah. Through the chair to the mayor. Updates on the blacktopping, I did see, well, you gave it last time, in North, North Street and Houghton, I do know, and I think Brooklyn were done in the past couple of days. I don't know if all of Houghton was done, it looked like it. Obviously, there's still Eagle Street.
Yeah, so Eagle.
So a couple of questions I just have with that, and again, this is based off of just social media, but, you know, people were saying how their tires and rims got damaged. Were there any that filed complaints with the ci?
Yeah, we, yeah, we had a couple people, um, file a claim, which you're welcome to do in the treasurer's office, see Beverly Lee Cooper if you have a pop tire or things like that, and we coordinate that with the, the vendor, depending on what street you're on.
And is the city responsible for that? I mean, when someone's hitting a manhole or a?
Well, it depends on if it was prior reported, but because we're under construction, the construction companies are responsible for the work site. Um, so if we get a call that there's a raised, um, water cover, you know, we try to fix it within 24 hours, but in the meantime, somebody could hit it, maybe we don't get to it right away, or maybe we don't even know. Um, so we do co- communicate with the vendor quite a bit if we have those issues. Um, we've even been known, and I've even been known, to go out at 10 o'clock at night and put a cone over it. Um, so we're trying to do the best we can with what we're working with, but it is construction. Um, but if anyone has any of those problems, they should, you know, write a written letter with an estimate and send it to, um, Mrs. Cooper, and she will contact the appropriate contractor or insurance company.
And if I could continue with that, um, I know last meeting, you said how, you know, they were going to be starting in a couple of weeks, and I think you said even their, their contract said they didn't even have to blacktop it even this early yet.
Yeah.
And I guess, I don't know what the contract specifically is, if it's with the city, or if it was with Berkshire Gas, or, you know, depending on which roads.
So, it depends on really what road you're talking about.
Well, hold on, so I, I guess that my concern is, um, is some of these roads, and I, and I know I've messaged this to you, but some of these roads have been scraped down for, you know, several weeks. And, and both of them are main roads, if you take Eagle and Houghton, you think about the amount of traffic that would go over them, is in the future, I mean, can the city have more say to say, look, if you are scraping a road, you can't go seven weeks before you, you pave it?
There's a bug in my office. Um, I totally agree with you. So, we've got two different, three different projects going on, um, that all started at once. So to answer your, kind of your question about Houghton Street, Brooklyn, and Eagle, that's one contract. And then you have the smaller streets, uh, the Bracewell going around the corner in North Holden, and those side streets off of Liberty, and a couple going up all of Prospect Street and down, that's a different project. And then we also have Berkshire Gas over here digging up every road possible in the city. Um, so, we're trying to coordinate that, but one of the concerns that I've had with, um, construction, and again, you're right, planning out a timeline, was the length of time it's been ripped up versus when we're putting blacktop down. Um, so that's something we're going to work to improve going forward, um, but it has been a pain in the neck. But the way companies like to do it, and we have two different contractors, is they like to do all the grading first, then do all the sidewalks, then do all the curbs, then come in and make it pretty. Um, some of these areas don't involve all four of those steps. So where I sit, hearing from all of you, is, well, why can't we just do this? And like, they can't mobilize like that. Um, but we will do a better job in this as we go forward, but part of our problem is we have a lot of construction going on, which is a good thing. Um, but it's happening all at once. So, as much as people complained that their roads were bad to begin with, now we're trying to make them better, and it's still tough.
Next week, they'll be complaining people are speeding.
Exactly. Exactly. But Eagle Street, so the original plan was Monday into Tuesday, Houghton, Owens, Brooklyn, the North Street piece, and then start Tuesday afternoon on Eagle. We're, we're delayed by like eight hours, so they'll be hitting Eagle Street before week's end.
I mean, the paving goes down very quick.
Yeah.
Let's see, our paving.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Luskowitz?
Through the chair to the mayor, I know you're sick of these questions about the bridges, so we know there's money for an engineering survey on Veterans Bridge, but was there any motion made with Berkshire Gas for the removal of a pipe on?
So we're-
any motion made with Berkshire Gas for the removal of a pipe on Brown Street?
So we're, yeah, we're going back and forth a little bit on Brown Street. It is on the tip. We wanted to do a temporary repair before we hit the tip funding, and we weren't successful with that. So there are conversations going around, are there other programs available that we could get that bridge repaired and opened? We had money internally to do a portion of the temporary repair, and then, once we got into the bid spec and started digging it apart a little bit, you know, Tim is very good at what he does, it was like there's a piece missing, and the piece was how do we address certain aspects of that bridge? So we're working with Mass dot on that, to say that I really wanted it open by the end of the summer, but that's not a reality at this point because of the funding and the price tag, and to do it right.
So the temporary fix is kind of off the table?
The temporary fix is kind of off the table at this moment in time. The Sons of Itley Bridge is a whole other story in itself. You know, we understand that the egress coming out of Heritage Park for the Fret yard, that's an important aspect even for people who are just trying to come off Furnace Street, and you know, you don't want to cut over two lanes. So that, we're trying to address internally. We made the decision to shut that bridge down just because you could see through it. You're welcome.
Councilor Breen?
I just have a question. School starts Thursday?
Yes, half a day.
And the paving starts when on Eagle Street?
Paving has already started on the Houghton Street area.
What about Eagle?
Eagle should probably start.
I'm just worried about the paving truck and the buses.
Yep, buses always go through, that's one thing that we've made very clear to all these contractors, buses and emergency vehicles have their way. They've all been fully read in as to when we expect the buses to go through.
Perfect.
Otherwise, the mayor will be on the bus directing traffic to get the buses through.
Okay, anybody else? I don't see any more concerns, no correspondence. I'll make, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.